It's a great day in Kershaw County, an all-American county. It's time now, we have all members of the council present, so we have to declare a quorum. Basketball and wrestling and volleyball are wrapping up the winter season with a number of championship teams in the possibility, and we're signing up now for spring sports, and it's just a great day to be in this county. Thank you all for joining us. We are now called to order, and I ask Councilman Snodgrass to lead us, if you'll all stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this day, and, Lord, thank you to live in this great country, the United States of America, Lord, in which we're blessed, Lord, to come and to assemble, and, Lord, to exchange and share ideas, and, Lord, to be able to voice our opinions on how we see the quality of life in our county, and to be able to make a difference, and to make a difference in changes in the world in which we live. Father, I pray that you will bless our time together, bless the conversations, and, Lord, in all that we do, Lord, we seek, we seek for the betterment of this community, this great place that we call home, Kershaw County. Father, I pray that you continue to be with our military personnel, or those who wear that American flag on their shoulder, pray you be with them, and, Lord, bless them and their families, both stateside and abroad. Thank you, Lord, for our first responders, Lord, who, in the midst of chaos, run to it, Lord, while others are running from it. So, Lord, I pray that you will bless those who wear that uniform here locally, whether it be our sheriff's office, our EMS, or firefighter, our first responders, Lord, bless them and be with them. Lord, we pray this in Jesus' name, all God's people said.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for those words, David. With that, we move into our program tonight. Public comments are first up. Mr. DeBeauz, can you bring forward the public comments?
Mr. Chairman, seven people have signed up, and the maximum time allotted for public comments is 30 minutes, so each person will get a little over four minutes. The first person that signed up is our sheriff, Sheriff Buggum. And as the sheriff comes up, I would remind everyone, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to this body. There will be no questions and answers, there's no time for an exchange here, but we certainly want to hear from everyone. I ask you to keep your comments within the quorum of this body, and focused on moving the county ahead. Mr. Sheriff, please go ahead, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My comments tonight are in reference to the cease and desist letter by Kershaw County to a firing range during our last council meeting. This matter is currently on tonight's agenda, under Old Business, item number two. I originally brought this matter to county council's attention as a public safety concern. Under all the circumstances before us, prior to the last council meeting, I feel council unanimously took appropriate action in issuing a cease and desist letter, but not taking further illegal action at that time. This was not, in any way, shape, or form, an attempt to infringe anyone's Second Amendment rights. This matter had nothing to do with anyone's ability to possess a firearm, or even their ability to discharge a firearm. This matter is a public safety concern, and involves someone not being able to discharge a firearm at someone, intentionally or unintentionally. At no time did any party feel that this was an intentional threat to public safety. No crimes were committed. Multiple county council members, and myself, have used this range before, and look forward to using it again. Kershaw County has a need for firing ranges. Ranges give gun owners somewhere to safely fire their weapons. This reduces the need for them to fire their weapons in neighborhoods or densely populated areas. I am your sheriff. I am not a range expert. I will never be able to give an expert opinion as to whether or not a range is safe to operate. From what I understand, the complainant in this matter has hired an expert, who is working with an expert hired by the range, to try to address the issues between them. A final opinion has not yet been issued by either of the experts. At this time, I feel all parties and attorneys involved have taken great actions since council's letter was delivered. They are actively moving toward a resolution in this matter. It is still a work in progress, but I would recommend Kershaw County Council take no further action at this time, and let the parties involved continue resolving this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Well said, and if copies of these are available, we can also provide that to the media after the meeting. Thank you. Mr. DeBeauz, who's next up?
The third person to sign up is Cliff Judy. Mr. Judy, please.
My name is Cliff Judy. I own--
Can you get the microphone in front of you, Mr. Judy? Thank you.
I'm the chairman of the county, council members. I own a campground on Highway 12. I've been complaining about this matter since June of 2016. It's a nuisance, it's a public nuisance, and it's unsafe. I have not pursued it for reasons that other people have pursued it, and the noise has evaded to some degree. But I own land down toward the interstate, we sold land down there. It's gonna be unusual--
We're having trouble hearing you.
All right, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, please.
The land with this noise and with these guns going off is unusual. And you have a noise ordinance, all due respect to the sheriff, the noise ordinance has been violated. And the first time it's violated, there's a fine of $250. The second time it's violated, there's 30 days in jail. And I don't know why it hadn't been enforced. I've complained, I've complained to the Economic Development Board, I've complained to the county administrator, nothing has happened, and I left a file for you that shows what-- I'm no expert on the ballistics, but I left a military manual that shows the range of a M1 rifle, 3,500 yards. It covers everything out, almost to the railroad track on Six-O-One. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Judy. Mr. DeBeauz?
The next person to sign up is Penray Gustafson.
Good evening. I'm Penray Gustafson, and I agree with probably everybody in the room that safety, public safety, is the government's first priority. But I'm not actually gonna talk about that, because there are other people who want to convey their opinions and information about that. I actually am coming forward to talk about ways to serve the county, your local areas, your neighborhoods, by serving on boards and commissions on the local level. Many people are probably not aware of all the opportunities you can take advantage of without an election. And Curtis Loftus, who's our state treasurer, I met with him last week, and on a state level-- now, I'll talk about the local level in a minute-- on the state level, we have over 1,100 vacancies, and all kinds of boards. Huge, huge. Some boards have nobody on them. So I'm conveying his message to this community that the state could use more representation on a wide variety of industries and areas, including education, transportation, et cetera. As far as our community is concerned, I've done some digging into Kershaw County, and we too have vacancies, lots of them, right? And depending on what your specialty is, and what you know how to do, what your, you know, your work, your experience, you could really provide a lot to the community by just volunteering to serve on one of these boards, if they are so appointed and selected. But it's a way to make your voice be heard and count. We all know plenty of unelected bureaucrats who are making decisions for us every day across the land. So, but some of them are really good people, like the people on the boards and the commissions. So, really, that's all I wanted to say tonight, was to convey that from our state treasurer, to encourage our Kershaw County residents to look into this. And tonight, it would be in reference to safety, and I don't know what else, but public safety, probably. There's probably some board somewhere that has vacancy. So, thank you for your work and your time. As always, I thank each one of you for what you do, to represent us and make some hard discerning decisions. I know it's not always easy. And my church, and I always lift up all of our leaders, up in prayer, whoever you are, for help and guidance in your decision-making, and I also pray for the people in this room for the same reason. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. DeBeauz?
The next person to sign up is Alan Cobb. Mr. Cobb, please, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to start out by thanking you guys for the great job you're doing, doing really good. We appreciate the hard work. I bumped into somebody the other day on her way to work at a Cracker Barrel, and I told them, "One day, maybe we can have a Cracker Barrel." And they said, "No, the signs were too big." And I guess there's a regulation pertaining to the signs on the roadways, I'm assuming. Maybe we could check back into that. Maybe that's a regulation that's a little bit too much. I was trying to figure out how so many other counties can have Cracker Barrels. Some of them numerous Cracker Barrels, but we can't. Sign too high? Well, we got aircraft flying lower than everybody else? Is it, don't want it to damage the look of a historic Camden? I think the Cracker Barrel would fit in with our community. And I have nothing to do with Cracker Barrel. I don't own any stock in it. I do enjoy going to them. But I think it's silly for us to have a regulation pertaining to a sign that every county practically in the southeast is okay with. So my request tonight is if you'll take the time, look into it, and see if we can change that regulation just to get us another restaurant. And that's all I got, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Mr. DeBeauz?
The next person to sign up is Sherwood Scott. Ms. Scott?
Good evening. I had prepared some remarks, but I'm gonna forego those. The biggest thing I want to convey this evening is I'm extremely unhappy with the way that the gun range situation has been handled, from my point of view. I feel that I have been left out of the loop in a lot of the conversations that have happened. It's been extremely one-sided. I know you guys don't have a lot to do with what goes into the newspaper, but the newspaper article that went out made us sound like a hot sack of dog crap. And we were fielding phone calls quite a bit for that, asking why we were shut down. It really made us sound like we weren't doing anything to cooperate. And anybody who knows me, and anybody who's been out to my range, knows that I care about safety. And anybody who can say otherwise, I will call you a liar to your face. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. DeBeauz?
The last person to sign up is Tom Webb III.
Mr. Webb?
Mr. DeBeauz, I think you skipped someone. You said seven?
Yeah, there was a withdrawal.
There was a withdrawal.
Okay.
Mr. Webb, please, go ahead.
I surely appreciate safety, but there's a short-term view and a long-term view, and I think owning guns is very important for national safety. So, the sound of gunshots under good conditions sounds like liberty to me. It sounds like safety, the long-term type. I wanted to speak a little bit about the coronavirus, just briefly. It seemed like China is having an awful trouble, an awful lot of trouble with it. There's various theories. There are people saying that it's probably a biological agent released by the Chinese, maybe not on purpose, but came out of their labs. So why are they so worried about something that has such a low mortality rate? It could be that it's expected to mutate, maybe it was designed to do that. At any rate, it's a wake-up call for us. If this is not the big game changer that's gonna affect the world, and affect us, then at least it should open our eyes about the possibility. There are countries all around the world that have these laboratories concocting something that would scare you, dreadful things. And as they make the thing that harms people, they also make the vaccine that maybe will protect their people. So, biological warfare, it's something that really happened, and we could really suffer from it. So I'm encouraging people to do a little something for themselves, and would like for Kershaw County to maybe advise people to put aside a little bit of food. In China, there are cities that have been closed off, people starving. Could it happen here? Well, I think it could, but I'm always a pessimist on one side and an optimist on the other. There's something we could do about it, and store a little bit of food. You could pass a resolution. I'm asking you all to do that, to advise people to store something. And I know some people on your board here, on the council, do that. They're involved with storing food. It's a very good idea. So I have a poem. It's called "Insurance by the Pound." Our old boat can barely float with a nasty swamp inside. It's a ship of state that pirates hate, and I might run and hide. Our charts are wrong, say the sirensong, and the stars don't line up right, and the fates all claim our time is gone, and the future won't be bright. There's a storm ahead, and the crew is drunk, and the captain lives in dread, and I'm afraid we'll soon be sunk, so something must be said. We might get along, you see, in our own little ships a while, and though we like our steaks and greens, we'll store a pile up high in style with pounds and pounds of beans. This is pinto beans, it's very cheap right now, it's easy to store in these containers, but if the grocery stores run out of it, this is gonna be very expensive, and you wish you had it. Oh, by the way, it's four years ago in February that Antonin Scalia died under suspicious circumstances, so I'm proclaiming February to be "Who Kills Scalia Month"? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBeauz?
One procedural matter, Mr. Chairman. When I took the comment sheet down, this gentleman indicated to me that he--
Sure, let's go ahead, please. Can you identify him, please?
Craig Shire.
Shire?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shire, please.
Yes, sir. I'm a 22-year military veteran, and I can, I'm here tonight to sort of testify to-- it's, a lot of times, serving in the military is a high adrenaline environment, and the adjustment from the people that sometimes retire out of Fort Jackson to civilian life is greatly aided by the Sandhills Gun Range. Greatly aided. Anything against the Sandhills Gun Range is clearly anti-veteran. There's no question that anybody that is opposing the Sandhills Gun Range is doing that to the detriment of veterans. So, I'm gonna make this really brief, but I think we can all agree that it's detrimental to veterans. Has there been a study to the impact on veterans before you proceed? Is there going to be a study on the impact of the veterans? Because that's a very therapeutic necessity, I believe.
Mr. Shire, this is not a time for question and answers.
Okay, all right, well, hopefully, we can have a study, and I don't know how many of you all are veterans. I'm sure a lot of you are. The ones that are, I'm sure you can relate completely to what I'm saying in reference to the Sandhills Gun Range, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your service, sir, and Mr. DeBeauz?
That concludes it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. That concludes our public comments. We move now to the adoption of the agenda. First, Mr. Carpenter, I believe you have a deletion on Mr. McCota.
No, under public presentation, sir.
Okay, public, I'm sorry. Yep, okay, but we'll have to take it off, will we not? So can you help me out here?
Yes, sir. Dr. McCota is not available tonight, and is asked, we see, about having them another night.
Okay, very good. And further to the agenda adoption, I believe we've got Mr. Tucker wants to delete an item, please, sir.
Um--
Under Old Business?
Yes, sir, I got it. Mr. Chairman, let me clear my throat here, please, sir. Would like to, at this time, for the consideration of the cease and desist, further actions on Old Business, item number two, delete that for tonight.
Very good. Can we have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Snodgrass, discussion?
I have some comments.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
I want to say this to county council. I'm glad to see, Mr. Chairman, you put it on the agenda. I'm glad to see you're also taking it off the agenda. I don't think it should ever have been on the agenda. Mrs. Scott, we owe you an apology. I don't believe, I do not believe, this body should be involved between two private property owners' businesses, a dispute. And I will never vote to shut you down. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other comments? Seeing there are none, we can move to a vote on that, but I believe we have another one. Mr. Conell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I also have a motion regarding the agenda. Item number one, under Old Business, discussion of land jam, move that we remove that from this agenda.
Very good. Can we have a second?
Second.
Was that you, David?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Snodgrass, any discussion there, Ben?
Yes, sir. Just the backdrop is tomorrow, staff has an additional meeting with the promoter that's interested in this event. They've got some more logistical issues to work out regarding parking primarily, and discussion tonight wouldn't move it forward much. They've gotta talk tomorrow.
Okay, very good. I believe we don't-- Yeah, go ahead.
Point of order, I'd like to make a motion to delete the Central Carolina Technical College. The administrator recommended, but it wasn't a motion for it.
Happy to ask for that. You're way out in front of me, as usual, Sammy. Can we have a second to the-- Second for Mr. Gardner, any further discussion on that item?
Which item are we talking about?
Item--
Central Carolina.
Central Carolina, item number two, under public presentation.
Now, I have some comments on the riverfront property, but I'll save that to my council briefings.
Very good, sir. So we have three amendments. We'll take them in reverse order, starting with Mr. Tucker's amendment to delete the Central Carolina Technical College. Any discussion? No, it wasn't any. As we move to a vote, all those in favor signify. And it's unanimous, we move to the next one, which is the deletion of Old Business, the discussion of land jam, as proposed by Mr. Conell. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, and we move now to the deletion of item number two, under Old Business, at tab C, which is consideration of the cease and desist written notice, as recommended broadly by our sheriff. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Very good. We now have authority now to move forward to a motion to approve the agenda as amended in the three parts. Can we have such a motion?
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
For Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard, any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote, to move all three items from the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Very good. We now have authority now to move forward to a motion to approve the agenda as amended in the three parts. Can we have such a motion?
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
For Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard, any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote, to move all three items from the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and the agenda is approved and amended. With that, we move to public presentations, and Mr. Carpenter, take us into item number one, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, my pleasure to introduce tonight Mr. John Henderson from the South Carolina Association of Counties. The association is the entity we use to provide our insurance, to protect the county, and Mr. Henderson has a presentation to make tonight.
Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Ladies and gentlemen, pleasure to be here again for yet another award presentation, but before I begin, I'd like to convey my sympathies to all of you all for the loss of Gene Falkenberry. I worked with him for a number of years and--
Thank you.
Thought the world of him, and you all lost a great guy, but I know that you all got a strong team that can--
Can we pause for just a second?
Yeah, we have a number of people leaving, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, John.
Sure, it's all right.
There was a lot of commotion in the back of the room there.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say that I know that you all have a strong team, and that you all are gonna pull through and gonna be fine. Okay, now, for my presentations, two weeks ago, in Myrtle Beach, we had the Insurance Trust Membership Meeting, and as we do each year, we make safety awards, risk management awards, and you all were fortunate enough to win two awards this year. And the first one is what we call an Outstanding Safety Achievement Award. This award was presented to Kershaw County for the Defensive Driving, Distracted Driving Pledge Campaign that took place. I know Barry Cato had an article in your, I believe it was in your May newsletter, that had a nice quote in it from Deputy Greenway about the dangers of distracted driving, and you all took it out to the community and had 600 people sign this pledge, which I think is quite remarkable and absolutely an outstanding safety achievement, to reach out and touch that many people. And I know I've been preaching about distracted driving and cell phones for a long time, and it's dangerous. People don't think about it, and I'm sure glad that you all are making an effort there. So Outstanding Safety Achievement. Barry, you wanna-- I'll just read the inscription. 2019 Outstanding Safety Achievement Award, Kershaw County, presented by South Carolina Counties Workers Compensation Trust.
Very good.
Our next award is our Service Award. The Service Award is given to persons that promote safety and risk management among their peers and their local community. And typically, this is something that people nominate themselves for. This year, that didn't happen. Barry Cato got nominated by one of his peers for the work that he's done helping, and I know you've won this award before, but this is a little different this year. Barry does a lot of things behind the scenes that you all probably don't know about, to help a heck of a lot of people. And in particular, this year, Barry helped Lancaster County. They had some questions about how to insure drones and a drone usage policy, and Barry was right there and helped them out. And also helped Chesterfield County with some information about rabies vaccinations. And then, on top of that, Barry took the time to do a presentation to the State Recreation Leadership Conference on Safety and Risk Management, promoting those values with them. So this is what we're talking about, safety and risk management, and Barry, you win the Service Award again.
Hey, Danny?
And just one more thing, I want to thank Vic Carpenter for speaking at our Insurance Trust Membership Meeting two weeks ago. He spoke in front of his peers, with, speaking to other county council chairmen and county administrators about the value of safety and risk management, and it's so important when an administrator can tell others how important this is, and it just reflects so well on the leadership that you all have here in Kershaw County, and really appreciate Vic doing that, and the support that you all have given your risk management program for all these years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yes, sir. Ms. Cato, I see your lovely daughter and wife is down there as well, and welcome, and good to see you. But a little birdie tweeted me and said that they wanted to know when your retirement date was coming up. They're tired of you winning all the awards. I'm gonna get it. Stay here.
Other comments? Mr. Jones? Stay up there, Barry, we're not done with you yet.
One for Barry and one for John. Barry, congratulations. You do a great job. And when I was with the county, we did some of that, and I know what you go through, and I appreciate what you're doing. Mr. John, I have a question. How have you been with the Association of Counties? It's been a pretty good while, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. I think it's been 22 years with the Association of Counties, and seven years before that, working on the Insurance Trust Program when we had a third-party administrator, so about 29 years.
You never age. I just wanted to say that. Thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Other comments? I think we'll do a photograph for the record, but we're very proud of our staff, very proud.
Yes.
And the recommendation here, of course, is to retire the award and just give it to Barry forever.
Well, he gets to keep the plaque.
Barry, let me ask your family to come up with John and Vic Carpenter, and let's do a quick photograph. Y'all come on up.
Members of council, while they're doing that, I'd just like to, once again, point out the amazing work Barry does for this county, and truly how blessed and fortunate we are to have him, because other counties want him.
Let's get a little more in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry, a medal for you. Trophy he's won over the years.
Let's let everybody retire, and then we'll go on to the next item. The next item is item number three. Having deleted item two, it's a voter registration demonstration with John Kaufman and his team. Vic, would you introduce that, please?
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, as you know, we have a primary coming up and major elections later on this year, and the state has moved to new voting machines. So we have with us tonight our voter registration staff, as well as our chairman of our voter registration board and members of the board in attendance as well, to give the council and this community a primer on how the machines work.
And after this, we'll send them to Iowa. John, please go ahead and welcome.
Hello. If you don't know, I'm John Kaufman. I'm the Elections Director for Kershaw County. This is William Brunson. He's relatively new to us as the deputy director. We're full steam ahead because our election is in...
18 days, right?
Yeah. It's February 29th. We have the Democratic Presidential Preference Primary. That is a Saturday, so we're encouraging everyone to come out. We're ready for you. We are absentee voting right now in the office from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. So if you have a reason why you cannot vote on February 29th, we'll be glad to help you out and just come by the office. There's also plenty of time. The books have not been printed, so if you have questions about your address or your name and how it's listed on the official rolls, now is the time to get it updated. So we're doing all that right now, so I would encourage anyone that has a question. You can come by, give us a call, or check us out online at scvotes.org, and we'll be glad to help anyone. As you said, we have new voting system this year. It is now a paper-based system. It has two pieces of equipment. The device that Will standing by is called a ballot marking device. It's an express vote. The entire purpose of this machine is to print your ballot. It does not record your vote. It's loaded with a lot of features to allow people who have a disability to interface with it.
Will, why don't you come over here because it's on Facebook. Just show it up. Hold it up. Unplug it, of course. Don't drop it. People on Facebook would love to see this, this gizmo. Go ahead, John. Back up a little bit.
It has a lot of features for the voting public to interface if you have a physical disability. You can change the contrast, the size of the ballot, so if you have vision issues, you can increase the size of the font. So it has a lot of really up-to-date features to help people. And one of the, of course, the main feature is that it's going to print a paper ballot for you. And the way it works is, once you've selected who you wish to vote for, it will print that ballot out, and then you get the opportunity to check your paper ballot before it's scanned. So you have an opportunity to check your ballot and decide if this is the person I want to vote for before the ballot prints. And then, once it prints, you still have the opportunity to look at it and go, "I made a mistake. I didn't vote for Mr. Burns. I messed up." Go back and fix it, okay? And then it's not until you, as the voter, scan your ballot into the system that it actually records the vote. And so you, as the voter, will be doing that. So it's very important that we get the message out. This is not a receipt. I had someone tell me it's a receipt like when you go to Walmart. I'm like, no, you do not take it home. So it's going to be very important that all the voters remember, you have to scan your ballot. You cannot take your ballot with you in order for your vote to count, okay? And when it scans your vote, it drops it into a ballot box that's secured in the bottom of this container, and that's kept for auditing, and one of our procedures now is to go back and actually do a manual count, where we sit down and manually count each and every one of these ballots in order to affirm that our totals were correct. And then we will, of course, have these ballots for outside or state agencies or the federal government to come in and say, "You're doing correctly." They can look at it and determine whether or not we are doing. And so if there's any problems, which hopefully we will not have any problems, but if we do, then you have the physical copy in order to recheck. So I think it's a very user-friendly system. It's made by the same people who made the old Ivotronic system, so when you're actually voting, the way the screen looks is going to be very similar to what all the voters are used to. And the biggest change, of course, is the printed ballot and having to keep up with it. That's, you know, what I'm more concerned about. We are hiring extra people whose job it is to stand by the door and check you as you go out and remind you, "Did you scan your ballot? Do you have your ballot with you?" to make sure that it gets scanned in, okay? Because we don't want anybody to stick it in their pocket and leave. But we have them in the office. As I said, we are absentee voting, but if anyone needs to come and look at it, they're always welcome to come by, and we can pull one out and let you look at it and practice on it. We have a fun ballot. We are also going out places. I don't think we have anywhere scheduled between now and the election because time's running out, but any civic organization, church group, what have you, that wants us to, they can call and schedule for us to come to their meeting because we'll be glad to come to you and bring this out and show it off at your meeting. We've been out to several churches. We went to the NAACP Fun Day, so anything like that. If you're having something, you know, give us a call, and we'd be glad if we can at all possibly come out. And we will answer questions for people anytime. Anybody that has any questions or anything, please, just, that's what we're there for. We are here to help you with your voting needs, and we always appreciate the support the council and Mr. Carpenter gives us from the administration. We're one of the few counties that I can honestly say, whatever we need, we have. I frequently hear my other director friends complaining about being under-resourced, but I have no complaints for our office. We're well taken care of, and that lets us take care of your voters. And we are very excited about being able to roll this equipment out to all our precincts. And I should note that I know sometimes in the past, we've combined precincts. The state encourages us to close precincts and combine them to save money, but I believe that does a disservice to our voters. It causes confusion. So we, as a policy, do not combine for primaries. We're going to open every precinct so that anyone who has a desire to come out and vote, they don't have to worry about where they have to go. They can just go to their normal precinct.
Thank you, John. I'm sure there's a number of questions. Can we ask...
Sure.
Can you take a few questions?
Of course.
Councilman, any questions? Mr. Tucker, I see you have your hand up, sir.
Yes, sir. I just want to tell John and staff and Vic, thank you for what all you've done since these machines come out last year in trying to get the citizens acclimated with it and being so resourceful as going to them and making it easy. Can you tell me, see, my colleague's not going to vote come the 29th, and I've already voted, so it's okay. But I say that I don't want any hours in South Carolina, so I appreciate all the hard work and stuff you do. Tell us about a write-in, if that happens to happen on this system, and I have another question.
The way write-ins work on this system is, you know, in primaries, there are no write-ins. But for the November election, for every office that allows for it, there'll be a slot, and it says "Write-In." And when you touch that button, it brings up a keyboard, and you type in the name, whatever it is. And then, when you're happy with it, it adds that to the list, and it will print it on your ballot just like it would print the candidates that have filed. And so it works essentially, that's the same system that has been running, the same way that Ivotronics did, was pull up a keyboard, tap in a name, and then it prints it on the ballot.
You have another question?
Yes, sir, I do, Mr. Chairman. My other question is, I heard you said about poll workers. Are you still seeking some of those? Because I want to make sure that my colleagues and people in the audience know that there are children and grandchildren if they're 16. Can you explain a little about that?
Okay.
Get them a little job.
I'll be honest, we're always looking for good poll workers, people that are willing to volunteer their time. We can't do it without them, so we are always interested in anybody that wants to be a poll worker. They can come by and fill out an application, and we discuss with them, you know. It may be that you live in Camden, you're only interested in working in Camden. We accommodate you however we can. We're not going to, you know, send you to Elgin if you live here in Camden and can't drive. So, you know, we accommodate you however we can in order to get you assistance. Way it works is 16- and 17-year-olds are considered student poll workers, and as long as they're working with at least one, two poll workers that are over 18, they can work a poll. And we frequently use young people...
Yes.
Whenever they can come out. And so any 16- or 17-year-old, we are glad to have them. Anybody that is 18 and above has to be a registered voter. Once, even a student who, if they work with us when they're 16 and 17, the minute they turn 18, they have to be a registered voter in order to...
To work.
Work in the polls. So that's the only difference, really, between a student and a full poll manager is they have to be a registered voter.
Thank you.
We are always interested in someone coming in and volunteering for that.
Yes, sir.
They are paid. The 16- and 17-year-olds are paid the same thing as our regular poll managers, so, you know.
You need to talk into the microphone. Maybe I have John do it for you.
What he was saying is, they changed the law in the last year. It used to be that you had to be from a contiguous county in order to work as a poll manager, but the legislative legislature's changed that, so now all you have to be is a registered South Carolina voter once you turn 18, and you can work in any county in the state. So if someone was here for work or school, they can still volunteer here, even if they're a registered voter in another county.
Okay, other comments?
It increases your ability to work. Anybody that's from, you know, willing, we'll take them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last thing. I see Commissioner here. I think she's still a commissioner, Ms. Judy Brock. And is anyone else with you?
There's Judy.
Off the commission, we thank y'all too as well.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you. I want to make sure Mr. Tucker was through.
Thank you.
You're welcome. John, I just want to say this because I call your office quite a bit, and I really appreciate the effort to always answer my questions. I've never felt that I was a nuisance when I called, and I'm batting a hundred tonight because I actually thought Will were you. I thought Nathan was Ben Connel outside, so then you started looking a little closer. Judy, thank you for everything you do. You put in a lot of hours. Your commission puts in a lot of hours, and it's usually behind the scenes, but we know what you're doing, and we support y'all's efforts, and just thank you very much.
We enjoy working with the public and our elected officials and everybody, you know. I always tell people, "Don't be afraid to ask." You know, whenever possible, we will help you. And if we don't know, I will try my best to find out. So we are always glad to help. And I should note, of interest to some of you, filing for the elections this year will, of course, be March 16th through the 30th. It starts at 12:00 noon and goes to 12:00 noon, and I always like to remind people, when it says 12:00 noon, that means if you are not in the door at 12:00 noon, if you're swinging the door open, it's too late. So I always like to remind people, if you're planning on running for office this year, we'll be ready to take your filing, but it's got to be 12:00 noon, March 16th through 12:00 noon, March 30th.
I am, and I'll be early.
Mr. Connel?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to apologize for Mr. Jones' behavior. He should never disparage one of the members of the crowd by saying that they look like me. So for that, I am very sorry, sir.
I already apologized to him.
Other comments? Mr. Snodgrass, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm just wondering if you think this system is going to speed up voting, slow it down because it's a two-part process? What's your thought process on that?
To be honest, I believe at least the first few elections, it's probably going to be a little slower because we're going to have to explain the process to every voter that comes in. Whereas before, you know, people have done it so long enough, you know, they were like, "I got this. I don't need your help." So I'm anticipating not a whole lot of time, but that's why we've decided to hire at least an extra person to watch out for the voters, to, you know, try to, you know, keep their hands and make sure that they don't leave without that ballot. That's my main area of concern, is the process of voting on this and getting that paper ballot and getting them from there to the scanner. That's where I think is going to be our big issue. Some of my fellow directors went to Nashville. Nashville, the city, used it in a municipal election, which, of course, you know, for a city of that size, that's a considerable number of people. And that's one of the issues they brought up, is people trying to put the ballot in their pocket, printing it out and sticking it in their pocket, so we're going to have to be vigilant for that, and we want to make sure...
Sounds like you're on top of it. That's a good thing. Very good. Thank you.
David?
Question and a comment. Will the pre-election process be similar as far as it prints out a report of the machine?
Yes.
The number of the machine for it?
It prints a zero report, and it prints a results report at the end of the day, just like you normally do. There'll be, that's the same procedure. A copy of that will be left at the poll. So that, I know some campaigns like to have a runner hanging out waiting for those results. I tell people, a lot of the times, you know the results before I know the results because I'm waiting for it to actually get read into the computer, but, you know, if you're looking at those tapes, that you've already got it. But that process will be the same. It'll print out, so you'll be able to look at each polling location and see the results.
I want to say, John, thank you for your work. 2018 was the first time I'd ever ran for public office, and your office was always, was always a pleasure to work with. The process was very easy, and I know you're dedicated to the voters. In fact, I think it was a day or two days before the primary, you had the flu. This man had the flu, and he was in his office trying to get it done, and I was like, this guy's the real deal, so thank you.
We like to say, you know, elections do not wait for anything. You know, elections are one of those things that you can't say, "I'm having a bad day. Let's do it next week." It's got to happen.
Other comments? I think we need to move it on and close the discussion. We thank you again, John. I think you see the respect you entertain, and you will. Welcome to the team that you have with the gentlemen up here that have worked with you and with the electorate who use you. I want to make sure we emphasize one thing. This county can't operate without volunteers, and neither can the election process. Thank you, John, and we move to the next thing. Thank you, Vic, for bringing that in. That was impressive. We have moved now to the next item on the agenda, which is at Tab A. It's on the screen. It's the approval of minutes from January 28th. Can we have a motion to approve? Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Or Mr. Tucker, any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move now to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mary. The minutes, once again, are well done. We move now to the next item on the agenda. If you'll move forward, Danny, and it's on the screen. An ordinance, which is a first reading of an ordinance of the county council for some rezoning. It's at Tab B, and also on the screen, I... for some rezoning. It's at Tab B. And also on the screen, I turn to Mr. Carpenter to take us through this, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have tonight in front of you for a first reading, a request to rezone a piece of approximately 66 acres of land. Currently it is zoned RD2. The request is to zone it to R15. It has previously passed the planning commission on a unanimous vote.
Very good. Can we have a motion? Mr. Snodgrass, it's your district.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we agree with the planning and zoning board and rezone this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Tucker. Any discussion, Mrs. Snodgrass?
I'll just say, this is in an area of the county that I'm very interested in development and also growth. And this is very, very exciting for what's affectionately known as East Camden and just the, I think, what it will add to that. So excited about this moving forward and seeing how it plays out.
Very good. Other comments? Mr. Bozard?
Yes, I received a phone call today. And there's some current, some concern with the fire service out there. Fire protection out in that area. Do we know if there's any action been taken on this, Mr. Carpenter, that we can help that?
Mr. Bozard, county staff and city fire staff are going to get together to see what we can do. That's part of the process that play out as the development gets developed. So we are trying to work with the city to answer any questions they may have.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cornell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the map, my grandfather and my parents currently live right at the bottom of Canada Drive and McCray Road. And I just mentioned this in passing and said, what do y'all think? Have you been pleased with the development so far by Mr. Bach? And the other houses have been built out by Mr. Bach. Very pleased with the construction and how they've handled themselves over there. They or their neighbors didn't have any objection. And I don't think anyone showed up, after looking at the record really, to object during the planning process. Mr. Bozard, your comment regarding fire service, one of the issues is Cassett Water has a smaller line that would be standard for fire service. But the CEO of Cassett Water contacted me, who I represent from time to time, and helped that company. And they indicated that they would be happy to assist Camden Fire by putting in a tank or something like that, that would facilitate Camden Fire's acquisition of water to fight a fire if they needed it. I thought it was a real reasonable thing to do. They're interested in having growth in the area as well. And I just wanted to report that also.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snodgrass?
Yeah, I'll add, I spoke with the CEO of Cassett Water as well as other parties involved in this. And I'm very confident as this moves forward, that all that, the water issues will work itself out. So everyone involved is very optimistic moving forward.
All right. Other comments? Tom?
What is the difference in number of lots as it's zoned now versus going to an R15?
Ms. Conlon, can you answer that for them?
Yeah, Mike, come on up and talk to us.
Since they are not going to be on sewer, it's about half. They could do basically double the amount of lots.
Do you know the plan, what the number is at this time?
What's been proposed?
I don't think that's formally come before you, has it, Mike?
No, we don't have an exact number. We're still working at, again, we're a little bit ahead of all that stuff. I mean, we have to see what the rezoning goes through. Then we'll sit down and have that discussions. It could be anywhere 120 to 160, 150. It's not going to be overly complicated because again, they don't have sewer because they can't go any smaller than a half acre lot. So that's really going to limit them more than anything else.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, because I'm hearing some verbiage from my colleagues, I want to encourage you. This is first reading. Let's put the ball in play. And if you have some concerns, you've got some parties and staff and also the developer that you can talk to. And I encourage that. Sometimes we may get our minds into the weeds of some things that other parties have total control over and we need to allow them to work that out. And I think we just took that action just a few months ago between two businesses. So I would just encourage you to keep that in mind and would ask for your support in moving this forward on first reading. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing there are none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And Mary, it passes unanimously and moves on to a second reading. That concludes the formal processes. We move now to council briefings, having deleted items one and two under old business. Mr. Snodgrass, you have the honor, please.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of council, just a couple of things I want to note. I mentioned it last week that they were going to open, but want to welcome a new business into East Camden, Getwell Pharmacy, which has moved into the old Fred's building there in East Camden. So we're always welcoming new development there on that side of town. As well as, Mr. Cobb, you mentioned the Cracker Barrel. I am with you, brother. Cracker Barrel, come on. And so, but unfortunately, I don't, the county doesn't have any say-so on the city and their signs. But I'm with you on that. Bring on Cracker Barrel. And as well as, want to announce that there's an event that's coming up called Unity in the Community. It's going to be the Saturday after the cup. And so the cup is March 28th. And so the Saturday after that will be in, first Saturday of April. Unity in the Community. And it's a really neat vision that a local church has had and that they've realized that, you know, there's a lot that can be had. And people can come together when you share a meal together. And so essentially, it's a community-wide picnic. They're going to gather there, actually on the grounds of the Steeplechase Racecourse there at Springdale. The tents will all, all the hospitality tents will still be set up. And they're just bringing people together, just to have conversations and just to share a meal together. And, you know, we live in a world where sometimes our diversity seems to separate us. But the truth is, the diversity is really what is beautiful and it brings us together. But that's April 4th and the unity in the community. And I've got a few more meetings before we get there. So I'll mention that again, but excited about that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give everyone an invite. The, your local chapter of the NAACP, Camden-Curshough County NAACP branch, is celebrating its 75th year. It's been here 75 years existed in this county. And you are cordially invited. There's no charge at the Mount Mariah Baptist Church right down here at 801 Broad Street at 4:00 PM on February the 23rd. So go to church and then come back and have some more church with us. We might be able to save a few souls and change some hearts. That concludes my report.
Now, Mr. Gardner?
Very briefly, getting back to the shooting range things, I think some of the comments kind of, to me, people don't understand, when that, you know, came to us, it was brought to us by the sheriff. And, you know, I don't know where you work, but I'd like to think, or live, but I would like to think that if you've got bullet holes in the place that you're working or living, and you brought it to our attention, that we would act on it. And we were never under the assumption that we were going to close down anybody. And, you know, and I agree with Mr. Jones that we were not going to do that. But it did become our problem when they called the sheriff and the sheriff went out. It becomes a public safety issue. They have issues out there. And I would like to think if you had those same issues where you work or whatever, and you brought it to us, that we would act on it. I hope that you wouldn't sit there and think that we wouldn't do anything. Not that we can do a whole lot other than do what we did. And we did what we could do legally. We didn't take any action. It allowed for a 10-day deal for cooler heads to prevail. And that's what's happening. That's exactly what we did and all we could do. So I'd just like for anybody that's got the idea that we're trying to close down businesses to, you know, that's not at all what we were trying to do. We were trying to put it into a position so those two could get together, which they are doing. The sheriff did what he was asked to do. And if you found bullet holes in your home, I'm sure your first phone call is going to be to the sheriff's department. Mine would be. And once he gets involved, it does become a public safety issue. And it does involve the county, which is why it was brought to us. So I think people are misconstrued on how that got to us. We're in no way trying to do anything from a shut down business. We're trying to protect our people. So I just wanted to clear that up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bozard?
Yes, I want to agree with Mr. Carter's comments. I was getting ready to say about the same thing myself. And thank you, Tom, for doing that. In regards to a sign on Cracker Barrels or any other business might want to come in, I've had this sign ordinance, Mr. Carpenter got me a copy of it about two months back. And I've been looking at it. It's very thick. It's very big ordinance. It's not something you're going to go through in just a few days. But I do agree with these, that's the reason I got it. We do, I do agree that we need to look at changing our sign ordinance to get businesses like Cracker Barrel and some of the others wanting the bigger signs. Because you see them all over the highways when you're traveling up and down. And repeat myself again, I got that ordinance about two, maybe three months ago now. And I've been going through it. And hopefully, when I'm finished with it, we can do something about it because it's going to be up to this body right here to change that ordinance, change that sign ordinance to people you see sitting up here. So with Mr. Cornell, I mean, Michael's help out there from planning and zoning, bringing it to us what they suggest, and we look at it. My last comment is this. I will not be going up for reelection in county council. I sat right over there in that first chair where Mr. Webb's sitting for close to 12 years. And Mr. Ken DeBoz, they said he's going to put my name on that seat. I told him, you didn't have to do that. I was going to put my name on this seat up here. But this four years in the time I've been here, close to 16 years, and I'm going to let somebody else have this seat and have the honor of serving the people of District One. Thank you, Mr. Boz.
Thank you, Mr. Bozard?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I was very grateful for the sheriff's report tonight and that update. And I'm glad that the parties look like they're working it out. I've got a couple of guns and new suppressors I need to go test out. And that is the ideal location, has been in the past, and I'm sure it will be in the future. A couple of events coming up. There's a spring litter pickup that's going to be headed by the Clean Community Commission. If you remember last year, I think it was a couple of hundred, if not more, trash bags that were collected along Curshough County roads. In one way, that's really negative to hear. But in another way, it's really positive because you could tell a huge change in the roads. And also, I think the attitudes of the folks around, also with code enforcement and littering. So that's going to be March 21st. It's a spring litter pickup. 10 AM to 12 PM and then 2 PM to 4 PM. If you're interested, contact the county offices and ask for contact for the Clean Community Commission. And you can sign up for a time slot to get out there and help with this effort. One of the more inspiring victories I've seen in Curshough County sports came just last night.
Last night?
Yeah. I went to two games. Actually, Burns High School lost to Lugolf Elgin High School. And I-
Not my high school, somebody else's.
Yes, BYR. I just want to tell you a little bit about it. You had kids on the Lugolf Elgin High School team that had lost two or three times to their opponent this year from the Burns team. And they went out there and won. The crowd was behind them. They were fired up. And they just dominated. It was an electric atmosphere. Lugolf Elgin has probably their biggest match in this playoff tomorrow night against Hillcrest. And it's my personal belief that whoever wins that will probably take state overall based on the other competition in the brackets. But those kids have worked so hard. They were responsive to their coaches. They made adjustment mid-match whenever certain techniques weren't working. And I was just really impressed by the effort of Lugolf Elgin High School wrestling team. So big congratulations on that victory to the coaches, kids, and parents. Unity in the community. I'll actually be cooking for that event, so don't let that deter you.
That's what I'm going. What are you talking about?
Still come out. But it should be a great event. Multiple congregations and faiths coming out and getting together. And then last thing I was going to mention, Mr. Chairman, was another moment of inspiration and accomplishment in Curshough County. The West Watery Rotary Club and the Camden Rotary Club combined to have a fundraiser this past weekend. It's the Wild Game Dinner. It's an annual event. It's been building up over the past six, seven years. Overall, they raised $85,000 in little old Curshough County for scholarships for Curshough County high schools. What an accomplishment. There are so many people that turned out and came out and donated and helped and supported, participated in auctions and pluck-a-duck and all kinds of different events. So many people cooked and just put in a lot of effort. And it takes the better half of three-quarters of a year to get ready for the thing. So we're going to rest for a little while, a couple of months. And then the subcommittee meetings will start again. And we'll get ready to figure out how we're going to raise that scholarship money for worthy young folks and students in Curshough County. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a couple of comments. One, when this council met at the last meeting and we went to executive session, there was no doubt in my mind that there wasn't an intent to come out with an immediate cease and desist. Thanks to Ben Cornell, I appreciate his legal mind, his advice. He was able to help us work out a way to come out and give 10 days when we came out. And that's just a fact. I don't believe that the county should be involved. You've got two private parties there. There's no crime being committed. It's probably a civil matter. You've got two private businesses, private property owners there. Target has every absolute right to go out and pursue this themselves. They elected to try to get county council to do it. And I just didn't like that. I also didn't like the fact that we went into executive session. We put it on to change the agenda that night, which I questioned changing the agenda at that point in time. And what bothered me was that the other party knew nothing about it. Saying they had no information that we were going to do this. We just need to be fair. And that's my opinion. I'm not saying anybody up here is not being fair in their own thoughts, but I'm just telling you why I feel the way I feel. And I'm not going to change my mind. Let me say this too. When we talk about sign regulation, the 10 years worth of sign regulations, it's that thick. I voted against every bit of it. You know, I've seen so many businesses over the last few years that have called me that, give you an example. The corporation called and said, we got a prize for you. We're going to let you have a new face on your sign up in front of your sandwich shop. Well, they go to planning and zoning and come back and say, well, I got to do a $10,000 upgrade to get a $3,000 gift. Well, fortunately, they worked with, the parties worked together. This is a few years back. Mr. Carpenter, thank you so much. He always gets involved and tries to take a common sense approach on those things. And I appreciate it. But I think the regulations are too much bureaucracy. And I think we need to ease those up to some degree. My last thing, and then we can get out of here unless the attorney and the minister have a long briefing. I hope they don't. I'm not going to say I told you so. I'm not going to say I was right. The bottom line is the underwater real estate was underwater. And, you know, we put thousands of dollars worth of work in the road, the rock. And, you know, we purchased it for $425,000. We put another $400,000 on the table, on the shelves to do upgrades and make some things happen. Here's my issue. Here's my issue with this. I don't support that. Haven't then, won't now. Even though we changed the name, that's not going to get me to support putting money into it when I know for a fact, my priorities right now is with Larry Dobie's and with the West complex. If you combine those two parks, you probably got close to a million dollars worth of things that we need to do. But anyway, that's just my opinion, whatever it's worth. And I thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the county council, for your time.
Thank you, sir. And I'll conclude by first saying I met today with the president of Earnest Care, who's bringing in new business, 130-some-odd jobs to Elgin, right next to Curshough Health out there. And the young lady told us that having a vision matters. And she went through the book with us. She said that having a commitment to public health, such as we do with Catherine Johnson, thank you for coming tonight, for my community health improvement plan matters. And she also said it matters that we have a park. And with the help of Mr. Cornell and our rec services and Mr. Carpenter, we now are going to put a park out there. Parks matter for quality of life. And she is delighted to be adjacent to a park with her business that will make a difference. Secondly, on parks that matter, other parks have flooded. If you're going to be next to a river, you're going to flood. If you're going to have a river walk, you're going to flood. Columbia's did. Greenville did. Rock Hill did. Augusta did. And the one across the river, Camden, theirs flooded. But they're now all dry and occupyable. So having a park and giving quality of life and access to the natural resources of this county are an amazing plus. And on Saturday, when I- And on Saturday, when I was down there with the other people who were walking to see it, not a person said they didn't want for us to move forward and restore Veterans Park, and it will be, as it, water receded in about 30 hours, 30 hours of water for four and a half years, since that place was last flooded, not too bad. To the sheriff, thank you, you showed courage and wisdom and balance in how you brought that to the county. You worked for over a week with both parties, it's absolutely totally untrue that the other party, one or the other, didn't know what was going on. Attorneys were involved early, and it's a fiction to say otherwise. And when the sheriff comes to me as former military or as the chairman of this county and says, "We are not secure and safe in our businesses and our personal homes and property," then action is necessary, and the attorneys guided us to a 10-day solution that now is going to allow even more time, given the fact that we've removed the item from the agenda, and I am confident those two good businesses will step up and resolve it with the help of our sheriff and the attorneys involved. Lastly, I want to, not next to last, is I want to thank the staff and the, from Mary and Danny and Vic and all the staff for a great retreat last weekend. It was professionally conducted, it was extremely valuable, and we will soon see the goals and objectives up here that will kick off our annual budget process. I'm sure it'll be brought in by Mr. Carpenter at some point, but I do want to say that signs are troublesome, regulations are troublesome, and as we become more urbanized, it becomes even more difficult. And as a part of that retreat, just to let you know that it's not just sitting on our hands, we took up the notion of getting on with rewriting our regulations, and I'm sure that we'll get on with that and try to make that better, sir, and we will. Last point, Mr. Conell mentioned, money's raised by the combined rotary clubs, and not just a single-eyed rotary club, all our clubs, all our volunteers, raising money, supporting our children and the needy in our churches and our schools is a mark of the excellence of this great county. And the naysayers and the negative people are far outweighed by the amazing things that are happening every day. Look how we came together for the North Central High School. Look how the Panther football team, regardless of how well they play, have reached out to help out the North Central Knights. Holy smokes, we have a reputation in the Midlands of being the county that you want to go to. And I'm just looking internally, we all pray for the recovery of our Chris Spitzer, our battalion chief, but look how quick Keith Ray, you can attest to that, Will Cato stepped up, and when we lost Gene Falkenberry, we had other people step up to cover up and continue to serve our county. And to hear that expression, unity in the community, the week after the Carolina Cup just makes me want to give a long speech, but it's 7, 6:45-
Tomorrow.
And we'll do that tomorrow, and if anybody wants to hear it, there'll be a copy on my desk. With that, that concludes my briefing, over to you, Vic.
You did that without taking a breath.
I did.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, just have two items for you. As you know, we did have a, a good bit of flooding that happened this past weekend. Duke Energy and county fire crews worked to ensure that houses were, were safe. Approximately 150 homes were, power had to be disconnected as the water rose. In some cases, it was out of caution, in other cases, it was out of necessity. The Camden Rescue Squad rescued a family from a house that thought they could leave in time, but they didn't. Water rose just that fast. So kudos to those firemen that participated. Again, the, the benefits of having a professional fire service continue to be shown. Also, in, in connection relation to that, as, as the water goes down and people get back to their properties, and they'll be having to rebuild in many cases, and the county will do what we can to support that, we'll be having county crews going out to assess damages, to assist homeowners and working the information they need provided for their insurance, and the county will waive all permit fees for any, any expenses related to, to rebuilding of flood damage through the end of March, in order to encourage people and support them in their efforts, and that's my report.
And I want to just emphasize, would you say again what, about the, the point about the county waiving fees?
Yes, sir. As, as people look to rebuild damaged homes, docks, what have you, they'll still have to have a permit, but any fees related to that, that are connected to the flooding will be waived.
Thank you very much. Attorney?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, that concludes our agenda, and can we have a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Uh, Mr. Conell, thank you.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard, discussion, seeing there is none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, so signify, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.